Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement calls this public hearing to order. It is now 1:00 PM on Monday, July 13, 2015. Present with me us today, to my left, the Vice Chair, Senator Rory Rispicio. To my right, Senator Frank Uggan. To his right, Senator Mary Torres. To the left of Senator Rispicio is Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tina Muñoz-Barnes. That’s it. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us today. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Ms. Lucy Alcorn and Mr. Martin Gerber to serve as a member of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Board of Directors. According to the agenda, your confirmation hearing is scheduled to run through the period 1:00 to 2:00 PM, but should you need more time, we’ll certainly accommodate that. And then, we would start up at 2:00 to discuss various land bills. So what I would like to do is we’ll go ahead and we’ll -- oh, wait, before I do that. Let me just go through the procedure here. And then, later after the confirmation hearings, we will be hearing Bill Number 139-33, introduced by myself; Bill Number 140-33, introduced by myself; Bill Number 138-33; and Bill Number 137-33, introduced by myself. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media. And a five-day notice was issued on July 6, 2015, and a 48-hour notice was provided on July 9, 2015, to senators, stakeholders, the local media, and was also published in the Marianas Variety and the Pacific Daily News, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM on Monday, July 20, 2015. Please address testimonies to Senator Tom Ada, Chairperson, Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement. So we’ll start now with our confirmation hearing. And I have signing up to provide oral testimony, Mr. Dave Alcorn. I guess you’re going to be providing oral testimony on both Mr. Gerber and Mrs. Alcorn. And those are the only ones -- you’re the only one that’s signed up for oral testimony, so please step forward.
[laughter]
Please.
I think you’re going to testify.
So identify yourself for the record.
My name is Dave Alcorn. I’m a local businessman. Buenos en Hafa Day, Senator Ada, Chairman, Vice Chair, other distinguished senators. I’m very happy to be here today in regards to testify on behalf of the support of Lucy Carbolito Montanola Alcorn and Martin Gerber, middle name Junior.
Am I correct?
Okay. I took this opportunity to speak today, and I generally don’t speak at these things, as you folks probably know, but I felt it was kind of important that I mention a few things regarding what I know about these two individuals. Obviously, Lucy has been my soulmate and partner for 25, 30 years. Thirty years, sorry, baby. And my business partner for about the past 12 years. Lucy was instrumental in GFS and what we did in the very beginning days with GFS and starting defense contracting services on the island of Guam, which was never done before by a woman-owned business of this scale, along with our brand commercial businesses in town. She has a lot of viable knowledge and industry understanding of the market, the situations in the market, HR issues, various things that go into financial parts of a business. And so, she has a great value here. Martin Gerber, a longtime family friend. Can I speak in plural for both? Is that okay with everybody? Am I going too fast?
No, no problem.
Okay. Martin Gerber has been about a 25-year friend, and he’s one of those guys that we all have in Guam where you have coffee with and you share information about what’s in the news or what’s going on, business transactions. And I’ve found Martin over the last 25 years to go from this very humble origin beginning to this kind of real estate mogul guy with a very successful business, buying out his partners. And both the combined experience of Lucy and Martin is almost 20 years on the airport board. One has 12, one has eight. That’s a great value to Guam and to the airport authority. I keep hearing this thing ping. I think a board member, as a business person, it’s percentages. It’s the decisions you make correctly that keep things moving forward. It’s realizing there was something on the radar you didn’t see coming, but you continue to make those percentages forward in the forward motion. Both these individuals have been terrific in our airport area, as their testimonies will speak for themselves. It’s important that this venue allow helpful dialogue and insight to questions you may have, but I also have watched this venue before, and I’ve been a little concerned with the way things don’t always move forward quickly enough, right? And I think a board member is an elected thing personally, where you decide to go to work on a board. You don’t get paid very much money. You have to put all your time in. It takes away from your regular business activity. And I think that’s the thing that we fail to evaluate in all of our agencies on Guam, is these board members, GIA, all the other boards, that’s a lot of work. That’s a lot of time that they spend. I just want to say I give my support on behalf of both these folks, and I think that Guam is a better place because we have board members that have a great deal of background and understanding of the GIA situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcorn. Does any of the panel members have any questions of Mr. Alcorn? Okay. Nope. Mr. Alcorn.
Mr. Alcorn? I’m sorry. Thank you very much for your presentation and providing your direct support to the two individuals, two appointees. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in defense of the institution, of the legislative body and the confirmation process, I understand and I certainly appreciate your perspective. One of the responsibilities that we have is questioning the qualifications initially. In most cases, every individual that’s presented before this body is qualified. The second question is the suitability of that individual to serve in that capacity, whether there’s a potential conflict of interest, and getting that reassurance from that individual during a confirmation hearing that that individual will remove himself or herself during any deliberation, I think is most appropriate. If, in fact, it goes beyond that, then certainly I have to say this much, that in defense of the institution of the Guam Legislature and any individual that may have not garnered sufficient support, it’s perhaps because information that was being circulated had not been clarified, or perhaps the members of the body just felt that, at that time, that individual may not have been suitable to serve in that capacity. And I bring that up because there was an individual who did not garner sufficient support in a few legislatures back. And a lot of comments came up about if this individual was not appointed to that particular board, he would have been more than suitable for any other board in the government of Guam. And I just, I had to make that statement in defense of the institution itself, not in defense of any particular senator’s voting, but understanding the process and the deliberations that we certainly have to take on in terms of ensuring and assuring the people of Guam that these individuals will always have the best interests of the organization and the people of Guam at all times. And I think that your public and positive statement endorsing the two nominees is certainly reflective of that. So I appreciate your testimony, and I just wanted to provide that additional information.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate the clarification on that. That was very well said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Alcorn. Joining us also is Vice Speaker BJ Cruz. So now, I’m going to go ahead, I’m going to go ahead and call both appointees forward, and you just take your turn, basically, you know, with your opening remarks. So it looks like Mr. Gerber is looking to defer to you for the lady to go first.
First of all, before you start, I want to say, I want to thank you for accepting your nomination. Again, I guess this would be, in your case, this would be your third nomination, and I guess in the case of Mr. Gerber, this would be your fourth? Third? Go on, your fourth. Yeah. Okay.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hoffaday, and good afternoon, Chairman Ada and senators, for the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement. My name is Lucy Alcorn, and I thank you for this opportunity to express my continued commitment to serve on the board of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Guam. I have served on the board since 2007 and have seen the airport go through extraordinary development and expansion in operations, facilities, and services. I am interested in continuing my service on the board as a recent member of the Subcommittee on Air Development and Marketing. Today, the Guam Airport is serviced by 10 scheduled air carriers and three cargo operators. Guam is directly linked to 20 destinations in 11 countries. Monthly, our airlines have the average capacity to seat 154,000 passengers per month on flights to Guam. With seasonal charters, we have the capacity to increase the seats to Guam by 180,000. The potential of filling these seats to capacity is there, so our air service development strategy will incorporate partnership with Guam Visitors Bureau in increasing Guam awareness and becoming a preferred destination in the markets we serve. A new player we are keeping our eyes on is Icar Airlines. It is a low-cost Russian carrier that has already filed an application with the US DOT. Should their application be approved, we anticipate service once again from Russia to Guam. I am very proud that we will soon see the fruits of our combined efforts with new service by Airbus and T-way Air, both from Korea and Cebu Pacific from the Philippines. Airbus’ official inaugural flight to Guam will take place next week on July 23, 2015. We’ll definitely become more, welcome more visitors from Korea with their direct service to and from Busan four times a week. And then, we anticipate daily service between Incheon and Guam by T-way Air this year. Dynamic Airlines has committed to provide direct service, charter service, from four Chinese cities operating 33 charters through July, from July through October of 2015. Over the last seven years, board initiatives include air service development strategy, promotional campaigns of airport business opportunities, customer service enhancements, effective outreach, and database development programs for business intelligence and communication programs. When it comes to customer service, although we are a part of the American family of airports, we are America in Asia, and our customer service should be on par with the level of the service that we see at Asian airports, especially those that we serve as our visitor markets. We refreshed and enhanced our website in October of 2014. It provides access to live flight information, lost and found services, bids and requests for proposals, and allows access to a vast amount of airport-related information. Simultaneously, we launched a new airport mobile app that puts valuable information right in the palm of the traveler’s hands. I’m really proud to see that Wi-Fi has become available within our concourse, and this is a service feature that exists all over Asia and a great convenience for our customers, as well as the rest of the world. As the Guam Airport continues to evolve and modernize in every aspect, it truly reflects the new rebranded look that represents a bold, dynamic organization that is energetic and moving forward, reflecting the new tagline that we’re on it 24/7. I am very proud of the direction the airport has taken and developed. I offer again my service to the people of Guam as a member of the GIAA Board of Directors. I am committed to carry out my responsibilities as a member of the board, as a service to the island, and to represent the public interest to the best of my ability. Thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Alcorn. We’ll go ahead and hear from Mr. Gerber, and then we’ll open it up to the panel for questions.
Thank you. Hoffaday, Chairman, and Committee members, thank you to the Committee on Transportation for this hearing on my reappointment to the A.B. Wampat International Authority Guam Board of Directors. As an active board member for the past 15 years, the airport has certainly been challenging and eventful. During my tenure with the board, over $300 million in improvements has been invested into the main terminal, the airfield, and taxiways, and the adjoining airport properties. I have personally evolved with the airport development and currently serve as Vice Chairman of the Board and the Chairman on the Capital Improvement Program Subcommittee. Currently, the airport has embarked on a $169 million capital improvement program funded by our 2013 general revenue bonds. Under this program, over 20 primary and secondary priority projects are in varying stages of construction. Of particular significance is the international arrivals corridor, which would address the unfunded mandate imposed by TSA post 9/11, which forced us to cut our concourse in half to ensure international arrivals are separated from TSA-screened passengers. I am particularly anxious to see this project through, having started on the board in 2001 while TSA imposed a separation of passengers requirement. I’m also very focused on a project high on the list of customer service priorities, the complete renovation and upgrade of terminal restrooms. Renovation to restrooms has begun on six sets of restrooms on the public and secured areas of the terminal. In terms of the airport’s master plan, during my tenure with the board, I have been very focused on safety, security, and security, and adding value to operating at the airport and surrounding areas. We’ve seen development in the airport’s Tezen Business and Industrial Park with the investment of over $30 million in private construction for DHL, Triple B, CTSI, and the Guam International Integrated Cargo Building, and the MSA warehouses. We’ve hurdled through FAA regulations in regard to properties acquired, required for the Tezen Parkway, and successfully worked with DPW and their federal counterparts, the Federal Highway Agency, to open Phase 1. We’re well into regaining terminal space in our ticket counter lobbies with the inline baggage system that would transfer TSA inspection equipment to the back of the house. We have extended our runways, now have a parallel taxiway, and look forward to the official opening of our primary extended runway on July 27, 2015. Also of significance is the terminal repainting project due for completion in two months. This is the first substantial painting project since the terminal expansion completion in 1996, nearly 20 years ago. I have had many good experiences during my terms on the GIA board. Serving the people of Guam in this capacity has been an immense honor, one that I would like to continue with my reappointment to the GIA Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I’m going to go ahead and open it up to the panel for questions. I’ll start with Senator Rispicio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don’t have any questions in particular, but I certainly want to echo the chairman’s sentiments in thanking both of you for accepting Governor Cavill’s reappointment for you two to serve on the Airport Authority Board. Thank you for your service, and certainly you have 15 years, because Dave Alcorn testified you 12 years, so.
It’s been a long time.
He shorted you by three years, but we’ll correct the record. So it’s 15 years, and Lucy is still seven. He did very well also in his support for you, but I certainly support your confirmation. I look forward to voting yes again on both your appointments.
Thank you.
Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. Alcorn and Mr. Gerber. Thank you very much for accepting the opportunity to once again serve in the same capacity. I think you’ve taken the airport through great strides over the course of your service. And just to echo what Mr. Alcorn had said a little earlier, I think you hit on a very, very important point, is that you take time away from your business schedule and your commitment to your business operations to ensure that everything runs very well to give to the people of Guam. And that’s paraphrasing, Dave, so I hope you’ll excuse me, but that’s paraphrasing. And that’s really a very important factor when it comes to public service. For the two of you to give as much time as you continue to provide the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority and still be committed to running a very successful business operation on your own, I commend both of you, and I thank you for stepping forward and taking on this additional challenge over the next foreseeable three or four years. I think there’s going to be great opportunities and additional strides that you’ll be able to accomplish. I look forward to your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Alcorn, and Mr. Gerber. Thank you, too, for stepping up again and accepting the governor’s nomination. And I was looking at the attendance report, and I think this is a great guidance for probably all boards to follow and submit to the legislature when they come up for reconfirmation, because it’s important to know that you guys are attending the meetings that are set forth by the board, so that you know what’s going on, how things are doing, and most importantly, so the people know that you’re not just appointed there and you’re not showing up to the meetings. And it was very, you know, I was pleased to see that you guys were always present unless you were off-island or something. But thank you again, and I look forward to voting on your confirmation hearings, and you have my support and my vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Senator. Senator Torres?
Hoffaday, Lucy, and Martin Junior. You clearly are the two most senior board members at the airport presently, correct? I mean, aside from maybe Mr. Sopti, who has had maybe one interrupted term. But Lucy, you were talking about route development and marketing and all of that, and I know that you’ve got your eye on increasing capacity and expanding more service from new carriers. But are you also considering how to address the issues and the complications that we’re having with regard to routes and dependable service within the Marianas? You know, just our regional neighbors, Saipan, I know Rhoda has almost no service, but I know that that’s their deal to do route development. But insofar as even the residents of Guam needing connection and reliable service, is that something that you’ve also considered?
Well, Senator. Senator Torres, I know that you’re very familiar with the airport because we were very fortunate to have her as our executive director, even during my term. As far as the problems we’re having between Saipan and Guam and the services, right now, I can’t say that we have anything really in place. I know that we’ve tried to offer unserved markets and incentives to the airlines. I’m hoping that maybe we could probably try to offer them something in that sense so that we could possibly have more reliable service. I know that there’s been a problem, but I can’t say right now that there is something in place.
But I would certainly, as you look at carriers to Guam, you know, that, because it’s not necessarily about origin from Saipan to other destinations, it’s also accessibility of Guam residents who are businesspeople or otherwise needing to access those areas. And right now, I’ve heard of, you know, meetings being canceled and court hearings being jeopardized because the travel is interrupted. So, yeah, it’d be good to perhaps look at whether there are available carriers that might be interested also in that as you’re going out. I just would think that that might be a good thing to look into. And, you know, Martin, you’ve had 15 years of service at the airport, on the airport board. What is the, at what percentile are we on the pay scale now? Are we still at the fifth percentile for the pay scale?
I believe we’re at the 15th percentile.
You’re at the 15th percentile.
Yes.
So you’ve moved up.
Yes.
At least two steps since I was last there. In looking at the staffing levels right now, and I know that it’s been, it has contributed to what many in the government have used as an analogy of the inequities between one government agency and the other. And I know that the airport is a different animal, and it’s not a line agency, and you do generate your own funds. But in looking, before this hearing, I pulled up the staffing pattern, and I was looking at where everybody was at. And you clearly have, right now, what I believe are competitive wages. For example, your executive director is at $143-plus thousand, which I think is quite attractive for airport professionals who might be interested in such positions, if, you know, if it truly is a competitive position. And we also know, most recently, that there have been, I guess there’s some uncertainties with the expansion office and whether that office still has its head in place, or has that been resolved, the expansion office?
No, I believe it’s still status quo.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is, I think in looking at the expansion office and how it was set up, right, at the time that a lot of the bonds were floated and the FAA wanted to be sure that we, and this was, Martin, you were there probably at the time, the FAA wanted to ensure that we had expertise onboard to manage all the projects, the grants, the federal grants, and the general financial business of the airport. But now, in looking at where we are today, fast forward, we’ve now adopted a pay scale that is competitive, and you’re now at the 15th percentile. So you are arguably at a salary base where you can attract professionals in. Has the, would you consider as a board and as a seasoned board member, whether the airport is at the point now where it can transition to where more of the experts are onboard in permanent salaried positions as opposed to contracted out? Because, and I used, I mentioned the expansion office, that was one office where you have a team of experts onboard on contract. You also have, in your engineering division, you don’t have a professional engineer onboard presently, and a lot of your engineers are contracted out as well. But if you look at the operations of the airport and where you’ve gone, and the tremendous progress that the airport has made over the years, since its initial expansion, it would seem logical that, at this point, the board should want to entertain having a more permanent body on its staff as opposed to contracting out. Because I’ve noticed also in looking at the staffing pattern that many of the employees are, have been there for a long time. They’re career employees. So the level of expertise and training is certainly there at this point, wouldn’t you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
But is that something that you, as a board member, actually, I’ll throw the question out to both of you. I just throw it out to him because he’s been here a few years longer than you.
Feel free.
But you’re clearly on par, you’re clearly on par with him, Lucy. Is that something that you consider in terms of a true competent and adequate permanent staff that includes the level of expertise that you have with your, starting with your executive manager, your financial controller, your engineer department, and then you have your airport operations, and your air terminal managers, and all of that? But is that something that, is that a direction that you would be amenable to?
Yes, makes sense. We should analyze the, or take a look at our consultants in the expansion office and see just where we could get these people to fit into these positions that you were talking about that have a higher, higher pay that would attract such individuals, whereas in the past, we weren’t able to attract them.
Because I think one of the strengths of the airport, and really one of the testaments to why you two are important in the composite of the board, is having that institutional knowledge. You know, there are a lot of very recent appointees to the board, but I know that you two and Mr. Sopti, who’s very faithfully in the audience here, supporting you. two and Mr. Sopti, who's very faithfully in the audience here supporting you, you know, that matters a lot. But I would also think that in the, in terms of the rank and file within the thing, you know, perhaps it's time now, now that the salary levels are competitive, it's probably time to start examining whether you can wean off of some of these hired professional contractors within reason and entrust that into your permanent staff, I would think. But, I mean, that's my thoughts on that. I'd be happy to hear your thoughts.
I'll certainly bring that to the board. I think that's something we should look at.
I think it's an opportunity right now, especially with the fixes, the permanent fixes that you've been looking at, the expanded runway, the opening up of the second runway. Now you've got the corridor segregation, so the mingling of incoming and outgoing passengers is now going to be permanized, that solution's going to be permanized. So it looks like, you know, the airport is really getting to a position where it's going to be, it's going to be utilizing its space in terms of the number of planes that come in, the number of passengers. I mean, at one point, we knew that the capacity is like 5,000 passengers per hour we can process, right? So, or it is more or less an underutilized airport minus the, minus, of course, the scheduling. But, you know, there's a lot that can be, a lot more that can be done there.
Thank you, Senator.
I don't, you know, I opened up with a question, and I just kind of gave a narrative, so excuse me for that.
You answered my question.
Yeah, but thank you. I would, I think that as Guam looks to have more ownership and control of its destiny, the airport, which is really, in my opinion, next to the court, and of course, I'm biased, is really one of the shining agencies of this government. And I would only hope that the best and most capable minds are running it even on a day-to-day basis and at the board level. But congratulations for accepting the nominations, and thank you also for your commitment to the airport, because I know that it is, it isn't an easy agency to understand with the regulations, but I applaud you for your commitment to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Barnes?
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair, for giving me an opportunity to just state some comments about both appointments. I'd like to thank the Governor for his appointment, for your continued service and volunteerism to the TIAA Board, and I want to thank the Board of Directors, Big Sopti, for being in the audience to give your support for your two colleagues, but more importantly, to the spouses of these two appointments, because they're both outside in the crowd, and also your son, Martin, for being here to give you that support. I just want to say for the both of you, with your years of experience, not just with the airport, but also outside in your private businesses, you do a lot, you contribute a lot, and I just want to say, Sidoos Masi, you know, Lucy, I look at you, and every time I see you, I see fundraising efforts with my sister, Amri Munya, and I don't, I think every time I turn, they're tapping, people are tapping you, can you help us do this? Can you help us do that? And I think one time he said to me, you know, even if I'm spread really thin, you know, I have to make time for family, I have to make time for giving back to the community for what you're doing today, but more importantly, for your successes. And I keep that near and dear to my heart because not, you know, there are many times where people can just saying, okay, my family's more important, but you've been able to balance that. And to be a woman in business, working on federal contracts, and then giving local folks the opportunity to have local jobs here with those private federal contracts, I just want to say thank you. I truly, truly appreciate that because you continue to expand and open, and you have new ideas. So we're going to still tap into you for, not just in the airport, but in all the other nonprofit organizations that you do, so never give up, okay?
Thank you.
And to you, Martin, you know, I disclose for the record, Mr. Chair, that I'm related to both of them, but more importantly, Martin, you know, with the family support, what you've done for the airport, you've never stopped. I could still talk to you about the immigration processing line when the travelers come in and how many hours does it take. And I know that you guys are still battling with that, and I'm hoping that both of you can take the opportunity. Lucy, you probably just came in a couple of days ago, and that line was probably still very long on the flight coming back from the PI and even other parts of Asia, but it has taken some time, Martin. And I know that you keep looking at that, I see Rolenda back there, and I'm just hoping it gets a little bit better, because the last time, for me, just to wait in line, it took me 20 minutes, and that was fast. So, you know, it's still taking two or three hours when I watch them come down. So if you can just take a look at that, it would mean a lot, okay?
Yes, Senator.
And I want to do say thank you. I give you both my support, and I hope that the chairman will put your nominations out on the next session date so we can vote on it right away, and I'm hoping you'll get unanimous support. But you got, you both got my support. Thank you, Sidoos Masi. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator, Vice Speaker BJ Cruz?
Thank you very much, Senator Munya Barnes. Took my one question that I wanted to ask, because the last time we were talking to the FAA guy, he had the nerve to tell me it was 28 minutes to get through the line. And I asked him what planet he was on, and because I agree that, and I was glad to hear that you're taking TSA to the back of the House and having more space up front, but really, something has to be done because I've been, I mean, you've both been into Incheon and other airports that process more people per hour than we have in a whole day, and we get through the lines there in 28 minutes, even as visitors. And to take sometimes, you know, five times that amount of time to get through the line at the airport just makes a really bad, bad first impression. And I saw Martin look up in the middle of his speech, and I can see the grin on his face because he knows what I'm going to talk about, is that it's only been 15 years that you and Vic and Tony have had to suffer. My 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning text about this bathroom is atrocious. And I'm glad that we can now go back to the gym, and I no longer have to harass you at the gym about the fact that the bathrooms are dirty, because another 15 years of that, you know, would barely be walking. So I'm glad to hear that you're finally going to address that. In your audit, there was the one thing that I would also like for you guys to look at is that I was a little concerned that the auditor stated that they were not able to get access to your conflict of interest statements and procedures.
Our signed conflict of interest for...
Well, yeah, well, just the board. I mean, the way that the auditor wrote it, "As part of our testing procurement, we requested for the authority to provide us with a copy of their written conflicts of check procedure, conflicts check procedure. Although we were informed that a written conflict check policy exists, at the time of our audit, it was not made available to us." That's the auditor. So please make sure that you guys address that at the earliest possible.
Yes.
All right. And you've been lucky, I haven't been able to travel with this damn budget, and otherwise you would have had some 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock calls about bathrooms. But I'm glad that's being taken care of. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Boss? If you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Familiar faces. And first off, I'm glad that, you know, the Governor saw fit for your reappointment to the board. I think that equating the sentiments of my colleagues. I'm confident, you know, you both served when my father was the chair, and he had, you know, he had a lot of great words to speak of, both of you, so he sends his regards to both of you as well.
Please do.
Matter of fact, I spoke, speaking to him before I came here, so he said, say hi. Question I have for both, and maybe, Lucia, I'm going to ask you to go first, and then Martin, because I, and maybe, maybe it'll be the same, and maybe it'll be a little bit different. But, you know, I guess, what I want to know is, you know, what do you see personally, based on your experiences and your observations in other terminals, in other airports? What do you see as something that we can do rather quickly, rather efficiently, and not too much money to be able to improve the services that we have here?
Senator, to increase the services?
No, to make the services...
To improve it?
Improve it.
Well, I think right now, I think what the airport is doing is, has increased or expanded our air services. You mean physically in the facilities?
Yes.
We've also improved some of our infrastructure. We have certain projects that are going on, like we were mentioning, the ongoing projects is the baggage relocation. We have the third floor isolation project going on, or up and coming. We have a parking garage that is going to also be, sort of be more convenient. That's, as far as our flight information system, we have those up. I don't know if you're familiar with those.
Well, yeah, I'm familiar, but maybe Lucy would...
We have them in multi-language, it's multilingual.
What personally do you would like, would you like to see, other than...
Well, I think that it's going in that direction. I think I would also like to see, like in most airports, almost everything is digital. You know, I mean, it's, the technology has, is a little more advanced. So I think, but it's still going to cost us more money, it's not something simple we can do overnight. As you know, I mean, it's still, there's project to project, I suppose, that we have, but that would be something I would like to see.
Yeah, thank you.
In the future.
Martin?
Diddle that.
Diddle that?
Yeah, we have a number of projects ongoing.
Right.
And that's why I think it'll answer a lot of the problems I have had, that I've had difficulty with bathrooms. I'm embarrassed to bring it up, you know, it's just a small issue, but it's become a big problem. So that's being fixed. The FIDS, I think it's what it's called.
Yeah, the flight information system.
Yeah, flight information, that's going to be, that'll be better for the traveler. There's new seating that we're going to be bringing in up there to improve their experience while they're waiting.
The Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi, the concessions, the food concessions. We have Outforbid coming up, where they will, one concessionaire will handle the food area. So there's a bunch of improvements coming up. I'm trying to think what we could do, and you were saying, a small amount of money. I'd love to get that line taken care of, and it's an issue that we've been dealing with at several different levels, and we're trying to get more immigration agents so they can service us better. We've, we have the hospitality program, which people will go up and assist the traveler, the non-English or speaking travelers, to fill out their forms, to make the line go quicker. Yeah, and apparently, it's still an issue, but we're working on it. Air conditioning's working at least, at the one time, waiting 25 minutes is one thing, but in a hot room, it makes it a lot more difficult. And that's taken care of, that's coming up. So there's a number of fixes that we've, that are in the horizon here, that we're, that we'll finally see the light and get it done. So that's exciting. The bonds, the 2013 bonds allowed us to be able to get the funds to fix these. Did I answer it?
And I guess, my last question is actually not directed to the two of you, but to two of your spouses. Recognizing just how much, and I know how much work they've put in, you know, and obviously they love what they do, but would you like for them to be confirmed? Go back into... I saw your testimony earlier today. So, well, thank you very much, you know, and again, like I said, I applaud and thank you for your continued service.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I just have a couple of questions. I recognize, and I think certainly is to be commended, you know, the, all the new airlines that are coming in, a lot of the improvements, capital improvements in the airport facility itself. But I find it somewhat ironic that while we're able to attract and accommodate all these airlines, international airlines, the thing that always grabs my attention is the fact that, I guess, we got somebody like Star Alliance, who's looking for a place to set up shop and can't seem to get what he needs. And I'm directing this to both of you so that maybe you can just, you know, give your thoughts on it. And the other question that I have is that I'm happy that we're doing all the capital improvements in the airport facility, because I think the first impressions is very important. And so a lot of that is going to be taken care of with the millions of dollars that's being put in to upgrade the facility. But then, once you get out of that facility, you know, the impression that you get is these buses that are lined up, smoky diesel on the ground, the ground transportation seems to, I don't know if we've gotten a handle on that yet. And so it's just, it's just one of those sort of things where we do all these great things, but it's this little thing that's going to take us down. And so maybe if you can kind of comment on that, on those two points. One is accommodating the domestic airline that's wanting to set up shop, and the other one is the issue of the ground transportation, which we, the airport seems to be struggling with, has been struggling with for a long time. So, both of you.
Okay. Yeah. First, regarding the domestic, or inner island, we, I think, Senator Torres, you mentioned earlier about what we can, what we can do. We have one project to build a new inner island passenger facility, and I believe that will be adjacent to the old terminal. And that's, I guess the reason is the planes are lighter, so they don't require CBP inspections, and it will, it will make traveling inner island quicker, more accessible, more efficient. That's on the books, that's one of our projects. As far as the airlines, Star Alliance, Senator, I'm sorry, I've heard that they were inquiring about doing business with Guam, I'm not sure of the specifics. But in my talks with other airlines that have been interested in coming to Guam, we always put in that potential business that they could, if they can't come to Guam, perhaps they could serve Guam, Saipan, and Rota Indian. So it's always in our discussions when we're trying to attract airlines that would service that market. It is, I would have to say, every time we talk to airlines, that's on our mind, so it's in the, we're trying to develop that market, you know.
And the ground transportation?
Oh, the ground transportation. Yes, yes, sir, I understand what you're saying, and I brought that up recently, I don't know if we're talking about the same issue, but I saw buses that were parked sideways trying to get in because of the, they weren't able to get proper parking along the side. And I raised it with management that I think there is an issue that we have to work with. Going to other airports, I've never seen that situation, it seems like the traffic flow was much easier, and I think they're working on a solution to that, because it just did not set right with me when I was, I believe I was dropping off a passenger, and I saw it was a bottleneck in front of the departures. So I raised that with management, and I think they're going to, they're working on a solution. I'm not sure what it will be, but there's got to be a solution to moving the buses to a certain area and separating them from the regular traffic.
Okay. Mrs. Alcorn, do you have anything you want to add?
Can I just say diddle?
All right. Sure.
I recall, I recall way back, part of the garage that you mentioned, Lucy, I recall that that was one solution to the busing issue, and...
Right, I think it takes too much of the parking area, other...
So, yeah, I think, Senator Ada, if the drawings are consistent with what I remember in the initial stages, it was a remedy to that problem, not only the covered parking, but the traffic congestion and the staging of buses and stuff, so. But there was one other point that I missed asking you, and I brought this up at a confirmation hearing for, I mean, I'm sorry, at a...
this up at a confirmation hearing for, I mean, I'm sorry, at a budget hearing with the Department of Public Works. The signage to the airport is woefully inadequate, and we, I've heard so many complaints from people who have gotten lost getting to the airport, because they're, the entrance to the airport from Marine Drive is not obvious for most people that are new to the island or unfamiliar with our roadways. And so I've asked EPW to look into that, and they are going to, but I was also going to propose that perhaps with your very healthy financial coffers, maybe the airport can also invest in, in some sort of a, a signage, at least for the entrance ways from Route 16, or 10A?
On Marine Drive going in.
And 16, and, and from Marine Drive on, because there are too many, there are too many visitors to Guam that, that really get messed up there, and then, if you recall, that area also has a median, where they can't immediately U-turn, and it's, it's, it's a problem for our visitors, so, you know, may I suggest that, that you please look into that as, as, if, if anything, a, a contribution to the community from the airport?
I think that's something we could bring to the board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now, it's, I, I think this latest issue of bonds to improve the airport facility was probably the first one since maybe 20 years ago, when Duty Free came in and they floated a bond. So it's been quite a long time since, you know, an infusion of capital was put in to, to upgrade the facility. That now is underway, and, but the airport still owns a lot of real estate up there, and I, I asked for a copy of the master plan, to see what you guys were looking at down the road, but maybe you can elaborate a little bit on, you know, it's not just the airport facility itself, but there's a lot of real estate up there. So what is, there's, you know, what is the, what is the airport looking at in terms of developing?
Not very, none of it.
The real estate up there? Now, I've heard arguments that, well, you know, that law that requires the determination of need, and the five-year restriction, and all that stuff, was a real obstacle, but if it is, then I'd like to hear from you about, but more so really focusing in on, what do you foresee the airport doing with all that real estate that it has to develop it?
Yeah. I believe we've invested, or the FAA has invested money west of the integrated air cargo facility, they've, to make it more attractive for development, and I believe it's for aeronautical uses at first, and, and if not, then they would, they would go to non. That's west of, of the large warehouse. That's ready, I believe we've, we've removed the homes that were there, they've done all the, the, the work on the ground, and I believe it's, it's just about ready for development. Over towards?
Any, any vision as to what's going to be in the, the new piece of ground that's available now?
More warehouses, perhaps?
Okay.
And there's been talk of a hotel, that we're, had an interest in part of the land, and in leasing some land for the, to service the airport. As far as the, the requirements, I don't see a problem with it, Senator. I believe if, for aeronautical, for land for aeronautical use, perhaps we can, we can develop something that would make it easier, since it's already identified, the uses are identified, such as what we have with the utilities. I believe they have a special consideration for use of their, their properties, if it's for certain, certain types of use, perhaps we can do something like that. Otherwise, the requirements, I think, are sufficient, and, and it shouldn't hamper our development.
And you don't, you don't see the, the existing law that requires legislative approval for long-term leases to be an obstacle?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Any comments?
No.
None? Okay. Does anybody have any follow-up questions? None? Okay, so then, there being no further questions, I want to thank you for the time that you've taken to prepare for your hearing today, and we will have this thing reported out for the August session, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Si dos masi, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Charlene?
Martin, why are you tan? Why are you so tan? I was going to ask that, but I thought it was nothing.
Having to work on the yard, poor thing. Were you trying to get me started on the, on those leaves?
We're going to go into a few minutes recess, because the, we're not scheduled to go into the land bills until 2:00 P.M.